Welcome, everybody, to the town of Norfolk Planning Board meeting for Monday, March twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty five. We are gathered here at seven P M. Eastern. This is a Zoom-only virtual meeting. Uh, in accordance to the governor's order suspending certain provisions, the open meeting law. Uh, relating to, uh, we're still doing the two thousand and twenty coronavirus outbreak, the March twenty fourth public meeting shall be. That's a really strange statement, but um, anyway, we're here remotely. I I don't know why that's on the agenda. Anyway, we're here remotely. Uh, meeting will be, uh, is being recorded and will be posted, uh, uh, on this. The town's YouTube channel after this. Uh, the Zoom link for this meeting was, uh, provided, uh, on our town's website along with the agenda. So we will go ahead and do a roll call for attendance. And by the way, all votes will have to be roll called because we are remote with so roll call with camera on. Uh, so just a reminder for that. Uh, so we'll do a roll call. So Chris Monford.
Hi.
Melissa Mayo.
Hi.
We got Gary Sullivan.
Here.
Eric Diamond.
Hi.
Okay, and then we do have our town planner, Rich McCarthy. Can you say hello?
Hello.
All right, and we're missing Betsy. Is that right? Betsy Fisjol, our admin assistants?
She'll she'll be here shortly.
Okay, and then our um, associate member is. Is he? Is he joining late, Rich, or is he just not able to make it tonight?
You know, I don't know his status.
Okay, so he may be joining us late. We'll just leave it at that. He may be joining us late. So we do have a couple, couple guests with us tonight. I see Suze and Jacobson and Justin from the town, so thank you both for joining us. So let's dive into our uh, agenda item. This is a special meeting. So we really just have a very short agenda, uh, and that's to uh, to discuss. A bylaw amendment, uh, to propose, uh, a bylaw amendment for the upcoming town meeting. So let Rich, why don't you give a quick overview what we're, what we're looking at and why we're here?
Sure, I have a uh. PowerPoint presentation that kind of go through.
And and we got to fix that agenda for these meetings. That that's, I don't think that's the right one, but we could talk about that offline.
Okay.
The the top part at the beginning doesn't, isn't right anymore. I don't think, maybe it is, but we'll talk offline.
Okay, and we are being live streamed.
Yeah. Oh, we're live streaming tonight. Excellent. Sweet. So yes, we are live streaming tonight for for those who uh, would like to join us. Great.
So to kick off the topic for tonight, the discussion is a proposed zoning amendment to expand the Pondville MBTA overlay district. To cover the proposed site for the Pondville Crossing forty B proposal. That is presently before mass housing. That's the purpose of the, and why? Why propose this zoning amendment? It's to provide an opportunity for alternative development for the site. Rather than a forty B which has been proposed. And before mass housing that very well me be back to the town shortly. The zoning amendment would um, it's something that if it's advantageous for the developer. Well, let me step back. So it would be at the developer's choice. So the developer, if he were to proceed with the forty B. The MBTA zoning, if it were to. Be voted tonight by the board, then go through the hearing process and vote on town meeting. Doesn't have any effect on the forty B. The forty B could override the MBTA zoning. Just as the can the underlying zoning district, which is uh. The business district with the multifamily housing, uh, allowed option by special permit. Um, why consider the uh, the overlay? Again, to perhaps have an alternative development that could be something to where. The townspeople, the neighborhood and developer could achieve a, a project that maybe not, everybody's. Super satisfied, but better off in the end than where we start. So that's why we're here to discuss this tonight. Just orientate everybody. This is what's outlined in red is the proposed site for the forty B. In Pondville. To the left-hand side of the screen is Pine Street, Route one fifteen. Heading north along Valley Street to the top of the screen is Hill Street. And then to the east on this is the former rail railroad right away. Sandwiched in the middle of there is two properties that are subject to, uh, which have a project eligibility letter for. A forty B project entitled Pondville Station, which is fifty-nine units in size. This next slide represents what shows, if you see this yellow. Line here, this represents the Pondville MBTA overlay district that was adopted last May. Which did not include, you know, we'll go to the next slide so you can zoom in a little bit closer, but does not include the site of this proposed Pondville Crossing. Again, this is just a little bit more zoomed in to see um, the area, the properties in question. And this is the, the purple colors you could see is the on-highway district and then back in here is the off-highway. Which does allow multifamily housing by special permit through the planning board. So now, the next slide represents the area. That's. Being contemplated for expansion of the Pondville MBTA overlay district, which is outlined in blue. Um, it does not include the former railroad right away. It's, it coincides with that property line here running from north to south. Again, just another view, um, to show overlay and expanded area in relation to what's on the ground right now. This area here is that is the Pine Street forty B that was approved. A few years ago for eight units ownership. So just kind of over high-level take on uh, the options here. So MBTA overlay is open to families as with the forty B. The density, as you see prescribed there under the MBTA zoning, it's a hundred and forty units. The proposed density right now for Pondville Crossing is twenty-five point eight one dwelling units per acre. The MBTA zoning. District requires ten percent affordable housing, whereas a forty B requires twenty-five percent. Important piece of the next thing down is that under the MBTA zoning, there isn't a minimum in terms of three-bedroom units. That need to be done as compared to forty B, which requires at least ten percent of the units need to be three-bedroom units. The proposed project actually has um, twenty units that are. Three-bedroom, five that be affordable, and then fifteen at the market rate. Uh, there is a distinct difference in terms of the long-term outcome, just to let people where is. Under the MBTA zoning, you only get to account the affordable units. Whereas under forty B, you get to count the forty B affordable units as well as the market rate, which is unique to rental projects. That's not the case in ownership. So those are kind of a quick rundown of some facts and. Information related to the project. Another note is that if it were to go to as an MBTA overlay project, it would go before the planning board through the permitting process. As opposed to the forty B would be going through the zoning board of appeals. I'm gonna stop uh, right here and pause, stop sharing, just open up for questions.
It's not really a question, it's just a comment. Yeah, it's a comment based on what you said is so. When it's, when it's a forty B project, that will help our. Numbers to achieve forty B to, to achieve our affordable status, I guess you call it. So that, but when we do the MBTA, it's just net neutral. It's, you know, we're, we're not, we're not gaining any traction. Um, we're just status quo. Uh, just making the comment. I'm not, not saying that's good or bad. I'm just making a comment that there is a difference there. And then um, the uh, and then it's. The impact, right? If they do the MBTA, if they choose to do that, there's less density, but it's still pretty high density at one forty. Um, it's just not two hundred. Um, so it gives the developer options. Um, and and I guess the third thing I just want to mention that that also is very important is. If it goes to the MBTA route or if the developer goes that route, we as the planning board. Have input and guy and provide guidance. Whereas if it's forty B, we, there's very little. It completely bypasses us, go to zoning board appeals, and they have really very little what they can control or guide them on, I guess you could say. So those are my three, three comments.
And just add one more piece on the for, I saw Sue's finger, so go to her in a second. Um, under the multifamily zoning. By law in the district, that property, the density would be sixty-seven units. So sixty-seven under the underline, which is that, which already existed, one forty MBTA. And then proposed at two hundred under the Pondville Crossing. So Sue. Nope. Don't. No. You want to keep trying? Somebody else wants to speak? We'll get you in a second.
I'm curious, um, while she's figuring out her issue, uh, do we have any reason to believe that the developer might?
Hey, hey. Sorry.
There you go.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Yes, and I can answer your question in a, after Chris. Go ahead, Sue.
Okay, um, I just wanted to say when Rich brought this, uh, you know, proposal and we chatted about it. Um, that my first thoughts were. I, and I've said this in meetings before to you folks. I, I think that we not need to race to the ten percent number. Um, you know, we're working actively towards getting, getting to that number. Would it be great to get to ten percent and not have to worry about? Forty B projects in the future? It would be, but I don't think we necessarily do that with a project. That, you know, our select board has voted is too dense. Um, you know, we've had discussions about it being too dense. Um, I think that. We need to make the project be the best project it can be. Irrelevant of what it provides us for affordable housing. Uh, again, our, our ten percent is very important. But the most important thing I feel is that it's a good project for the town of Norfolk. Now, nobody. You know, is going to be jumping up and down that it's a, that there's a hundred and forty. Units going in one particular area, but I think that it's, uh, i- if the developer chooses to go this way, it is um. Very beneficial not to have two hundred units because it is a very tight uh, spot. Um, and I think that it coming before the planning board. And you providing your input and and maybe even making some additional adjustments to this project can be very helpful. In- instead of it going before the, the zoning board of appeals. And the one thing that I will also say is that. You know, when we had prior projects go before our zoning board of appeals, um, it was really a different time. We have. Folks at the State House that are really focused on affordable housing. And I think that there was a little bit more flexibility in changing projects and reducing numbers. And and the zoning board of appeal trying to work cohesively with the developer to kind of find that sweet spot, if you will. Um, we're not going to get that same type of support. Um, the, the developer has hired a very seasoned team. That, uh, what they do is they go in and they represent developers before zoning boards. Um, to get the maximum number of units that they know that they're entitled to. So I, I think there's a lot of different reasons. If the developer chooses to go this way, um, I think it could be very helpful. I think your, your board's expertise and knowledge could be very helpful in this project and, and trying to make it as good a project as possible. Um, and it's just another tool for. Planning and affordable housing to have, uh, to try to work cohesively and to bring the, the best project to the town.
So the answer to follow up on, well, not follow, but it's, Chris.
So let me, let me amend. Um, first, I just want to say that this. It seems like a no-brainer, right? Like, I don't see why we wouldn't push this, not push, but uh, vote in the affirmative for this. Uh, but I am curious, like. Does the developer have an intent to go down this path if we make it available to them? And are they the type of developer to essentially say, well, you're not getting me what I want? So I'm going to pull my application and I'm going to start over with forty B.
So kind of assessing the landscape and, and on that question was if this. Were to go forward at the Maytown meeting, there could be that opportunity to go. Through this pathway. If it were not to go. Before the Maytown meeting, then it would stick to the pathway of going forty B. Not a, there are, there are no, in this instance, no guarantee it couldn't go the other way to your point. It could be like, well, no, we're not gonna. Um, we're gonna abandon the MBTA and then go forty B. I suppose that's still always possible. It's just to have an option out there. It's really provide an option. And that's really what it comes down to.
Answered. Thank you.
Yep.
Well, would the soonest, it would finally be after town may meeting, right? It's gotta go through, uh, attorney general and get approved.
Yeah, attorney general and which would be. Uh, more likely like August.
And is that, are they aware of that timeline or that fits in with their schedule proposal for, for permitting or?
You know, the, the thing with the A G, it could, they could go at risk. So I mean, it's not. I think in this instance, it's not really that risky because we already have adopted the MBTA district and we're just adding up. Adding in the um, you know, their area. Um, I hope it is, Eric, and frankly, um, you know, again, we're. We don't have any, there are no guarantees with this. It's really just to hopefully have an opportunity to. Have an option, really. They didn't, they didn't really, they didn't get a solid commitment. Yeah, we'll definitely do this versus not. So. Um, it's kind of like a little bit, maybe, you know, some people might not take this approach or think of it this way, but. Maybe as a sweetened offer to go a different option, you know? For whoever's opinion on this matter is. Now, what's important, um. Couple things, uh, we already have advertised it for uh, April eighth for your. For your meeting. So would need to be, if you could choose to consider, it would need to be voted as is. Um. That's important, so you know that. Um, and then.
The modifications are pretty simple. I mean, which is good. It's just changing the. Changing the acreage. It's two, it's two parts, the change, change the acreage in the map. That's, it's a little hard to see the hash marks. I don't know how that's going to show up on black and white. We'd have to do a color handout, but um. But yeah, yeah, we, we, but we could talk about that and change and, and enhance that off later, but.
Yeah, we could do that. Um, when we did it last year, it wasn't yellow. That was the, that was the.
The, the yellow hash marks are just almost impossible to see. Um, you know, maybe you do a blue hash mark, I, I, and then you do a blue outline.
Yeah, we could, we could certainly, we could. Change what it is. And that's why the zoning map exhibit is just outlined in blue.
Yep.
And then it's showing the existing with that yellow line through it. I totally get it. I can pull it up on the screen just to kind of.
Yeah, so it's changing the acreage, changing the date and changing the map. Yeah, now is the.
Good, sorry.
Isn't it more than just that, um, that particular parcel though? Isn't it?
It's multiple parcels that make up the site, yes.
Yeah. So it's not just. Correct me if I'm wrong. I'm just this, I'm just trying to figure it out on this map. Um, but it's not just where we were going to have the forty B with the two hundred units, right? It's parcels around that as well.
No, no, it's just, at this point is just the parcels that would be the Pondville Crossing. So you see this here, this parcel?
Mm-hmm.
That one. That's part of the forty B that's not in right now. It's just adjacent to the O. This was that. Thirty-five Pine Street. That was the forty B. That is in the area. Um, then there's, which is the abandoned house on Pine Street, this, this parcel here. And then there's this parcel running along. Um. This area here. So just for, I want to show you, just so.
On the other map, it looked different.
Well, so here's, yes, it is different. Um.
Yeah, that one looks different.
I'll tell you why it's different. There's a little bit of history here. So. Let me go this one here quick. Sorry, wrong way. So this piece here. The assessor's office. In nineteen seventy-nine. Changed the assessor map. Based on. An A and R plan. That the deceased Mrs. Ghul was going to. Record at the registry of deeds. Well, that plan was never recorded. So there's been a longstanding dispute, if you will, not from the present off, not from the people who are sitting in the assessor's office right now. So I might be able to get this corrected. Um. That's what the assessors are showing, but what in fact is on record is. This piece here, you see? You, you see this section I got my cursor on? Is really part of this lot.
So that's what the assessors see now? That's not.
No, this, this is what should be, the assessors should be showing.
Right, and that makes sense because I remember doing a site visit with that. And I'm not sure who on the board was with, I don't know if there was anybody, but maybe Gary Searle. We did a site walk for that. Hunter Environmental, and we walked into those woods where that, where your cursor is that triangle piece.
Yes.
Yeah.
But if you look at the, so just to go back, um. Actually, to your point, Melissa, we are going to cover it. In this change, though. So basically that would be here. Which is part of six Hill Street.
You said the new definition is gonna exclude the former railroad bed to allow for.
Yes, no one, yes, yep.
And you can, that's not, i- i- is it its own parcel right now or is it?
It is, yep. Yeah, it's, it's um, zero Hill Street.
Okay.
We'll look at the language. Sure. Do you want me to?
Yeah, you want to share the, the word, the PDF that you had that you sent us?
Sure.
I think it's just acreage, the date and the map. That's about it.
Yeah.
So then if we wanted to discuss it further at, you know, we vote to go to a. Public hearing on April eighth. Um. Is there an opportunity to make any changes at that point?
Um. Not. No, well, I mean, essentially, no. Because you.
My only concern is making, I mean, there are certainly pros, and we talked about them. I think my concern is making the district even bigger. When we just wrote that letter, um, about. About this particular development and, you know, environmental concerns, safety concerns, traffic concerns, all of that. And now we're saying we want to make, although it's less units, um, for potentially for this particular development. We aren't taking anything away on the, you know, on the other end, so. We might be losing, not losing, we might be having less development on this one potentially if the developer decides to go this route. Um, and have a hundred and forty units versus two hundred. But then we still have all of the other units that could still be built upon. And so that's, that's my concern, knowing that there's, you know, environmental concerns, the neighbors are concerned. Um, so that's. My only, that's my only thought there is that we're adding more, not taking any away.
Adding more, adding more acreage?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, and, and to your point, Melissa, I mean, so the other, so this is Pondville Crossing. Pondville Station is, I believe, currently a forty, forty B, but he. Could, he already has the MBTA zoning overlay. He could have chosen to do that and he might, maybe he'll pivot. I don't know. Um, the other properties over there, some are. Recently developed, so those probably won't change anytime soon, but some aren't. Some, there's some vacant lots over there or, or some that aren't new, new development.
So yeah, there's a couple on the opposite side of the district. So over by, um. It's on Valley Street. There's a few. Um, there's the, there's a one acre. There's, you know, we went through. Probably don't have them committed to memory. Um, but I remember on the slides, it was like a one acre lot and then like a three point five three and. There's, you know, so they were all contiguous and I don't think, I don't think there's any plans for those yet. Um, not a hundred percent sure because of course, everybody goes through Rich first and, you know, go to the department and whomever. Um, but at least that have come since I've been on the board, I haven't seen anything. So that was my only thought is maybe there's something on the other end. That we might want to consider, um, pulling back out of the acreage if we can, because I, and I know, Rich, this is way more complicated. Um, because we have to go through the model again and see how many units we can have per acre and, and all of that stuff. And what you're suggesting here is much simpler. Um, that, I guess that's, that's really the only concern for me.
So the, the all valid. Things to consider, um, I will, I will say that, um. Pondville. So Chad's point, right? Pondville Station could go MBTA and, and. Or forty B, which they have a eligibility letter. Um, when we did. Change, um, the MBTA zoning layer. Um, one of the properties in, in Valley Street was contemplating going forty B as well. Um, but we included them in the MBTA overlay district, which had the ten percent affordable. Which, um, changed the perspective on which path they would go through. So. Um, not to go too, blow up big picture, yeah, there's. There is. There is, um, a larger discussion about the inclusionary. Um, so it's not to say as if this were to go forward. That we couldn't come back and make an adjustment, but bear in mind. An adjustment without addressing the inclusionary bylaw, I don't think would be, that wouldn't change that developer's point of view. It would have to, you know, would have to be companion on the inclusionary. Um, for it to go a different pathway. So that's just. Something to give consideration to. Um, and then we would have to run the model, make sure we don't, if we're taking acreage away, that we don't put ourselves where we need to adjust. Put ourselves where we need to adjust the units per acre number, cuz.
Right, we wanna keep the height low.
Yeah, so.
It's one of those where time is of the essence, and. You know, we're trying to look at this to provide an opportunity for this developer to. To possibly change. And we just don't, unfortunately, we've gone, if we stay taking things away, it complicates the whole thing, I think is what you said, Melissa, and then you gotta run the cows, and. And we don't have, unfortunately, we don't have time to do that.
Oh, yeah, not right now, I'm just thinking, you know, I think for for all the neighbors that we've spoken to around there, um I think they would appreciate less density. Um if, you know, the developer should choose to go that route, so I'm definitely thinking about them. While also thinking about the rest of the people in in town, who will probably wonder why we didn't. Uh do that, because they're not familiar with the uh the red tape and the oops and all that, you know, the time that it takes, which we know. But maybe um maybe if this did move forward. We could take a look at that again.
Yeah, we should, definitely, we should revisit it.
I agree, Melissa, that we oughta. Consider taking hundred forty units back out of somewhere if uh, you know, we're adding them in now. Uh to, in the end, it's total acres available uh times. The density that we we list um by right, so. We we allowed up to seven fifty, I think, was our number, right, and now we're hundred forty above that. Would be.
Yeah, no, points taken, uh and I would. Do anything, I would just never said it that, you know, we wouldn't be able to do it in this go around, have to be. A subsequent town meeting.
Yeah, I'd be curious to see the the numbers, though, because I remember we. Have a lot of properties in there that are already developed. Um and significantly developed, as well as wetlands and those areas as well, so areas that would not be buildable. Um pursuant to the wetlands protection. Um so I don't know that I'm necessarily that concerned. With the numbers of acres that we're putting in at this point, I'd be curious to see what the numbers were, but. I'd be hard pressed to think that we needed to actually take acreage out as a result.
I mean, that's, that's certainly possible, I think, same as you, I would just like to to see the numbers and see, you know, know what the impacts are.
I think it's important too, Melissa. You know, certainly that. Maybe we try to have a a conversation with some of the neighbors to. It provide an explanation as to why we think this is a better way to go, you know, we're always trying to improve. Community engagement, and while you may be hearing from many people, when we hold these types of forums, we don't get. We don't get many folks to come, um we saw that in your last planning board meeting, right, I think we had maybe four folks that didn't. Either work for the town or volunteer for a board, um so, you know, it's tough to get that. Get that information out there, and while I understand. You know, I think all of the comments that went into mass housing were. Concerns about environmental concerns, water concerns, safety concerns, traffic concerns, um. And unfortunately, with a forty B. Many of those were just gonna be told, having been through all of the, you know, I've been here long enough. That I've been been through all of the forty B projects, except for Meeting House Road, the the section on the left. I came right after that was finished, um. You know, i- it's, it's a long. Back and forth, if you will, but I just. I think we had a little bit more support from the state in those prior years, like I said. I don't think we're gonna get any support. Or be able to. I think mitigating units is going to be extremely difficult with, you know, where we have people. Screaming for affordable housing and. You know, we're a community that doesn't have any apartments. And um. You know, I I don't, I don't see the zoning board of appeals, it's just my opinion. I don't see them being able to negotiate sixty units from this project.
No, that makes sense, and you brought up a good point too, Sue, earlier about having more input. When it comes through the planning board versus if it's a, you know, if it's under chapter forty B and it's coming through with a bunch of waivers. You know, that's, it's just a different process when you're coming through the planning board.
Correct.
So at least we could make it, you know, look nice, have a little bit of input, partner with the developers, um which I think would be. Appreciated, especially from the neighbors over there.
Agreed.
So if it stays forty B. And it's two hundred units, we can count all two hundred. To the SHI. If it's a hundred and forty, I think we said, and it's going to be um MBTA, then we would see what fourteen? So that was your point, Sue, Sue, about we don't need to rush.
Right, you know, we, we're an active, we're an active trust, we have a housing production plan. Um we keep our housing production plan updated, we review the things that they've suggested in our housing production plan. Um we're working really hard to get our inclusionary zoning bylaw back to ten percent. Um and I just. You know, nobody's breathing down Norfolk's back because we're not at ten percent, you know, the. We are in, we are in the majority of communities within the state of Massachusetts. That are below ten percent, you know, they are certainly communities that are nine percent and higher are definitely the minority communities. Within Massachusetts, there's far more of us that aren't at ten percent than there are that are at ten percent, so. It's not like I, you know, I feel like folks think that people are gonna be storming Town Hall. Because we're not at ten percent, and you know, that's not going to happen as long as we continue to work. Towards following our housing production plan, updating our production plan when the time comes. And um being mindful about trying to work with. Developers, you know, we may see, we may see kind of a shift. What if if our inclusionary zoning, if we are successful getting our inclusionary zoning back to ten percent townwide. We may, heck, we may see a traditional subdivision, wouldn't that be, wouldn't that be lovely, you know what I mean, um? So there's a lot of different irons in the fire, trying to get us to to a a good place, but. I I just don't, you know, it it's difficult to say. Um you know, well, that we think, not this board, but other boards have said, we think this is too dense a project, but we're gonna take all two hundred because it gets us to ten percent. You know, it it it's, we have to make the decision of. Again, do we want a project that works for the town of Norfolk and the residents that are being affected in that area? Nothing is going to be perfect for for those folks, right, but do we wanna try to mitigate as much as we can? Um through this process, through the MBTA Communities Act? Or do we want it to be, you know, a forty B where it's? I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a fight, it is not, they are not pleasant hearings. Um i- i- it, you know, it, I just think that it's beneficial to to. Not be as focused on getting to that that ten percent number. But continuing to work towards it, which is what Rich does and I do, and uh the trust does there on a daily basis.
And this isn't the only forty B project we have in town, there's several, so we may get there even without this.
Right, I mean, we have big numbers proposed, Chad, you're right, we have. You know, let's say this comes in at a hundred and forty units, the uh the development across the street, the project eligibility is for fifty-nine units. Um we have fifty-one, three and four bedroom units going up off of Lawrence Street. Um and we have potentially a hundred units in downtown, so. You know, these are big numbers coming to our community in a short time.
Right. Yep, points, good points, Sue, thank you.
Thanks.
Um so that, thank you, Sue, I think that for me, it's more thinking from a residence perspective. Um all of that sounds great, I just think if we're gonna go to town meeting and ask. Folks to approve something that we're going to revise, that we just asked them to approve last year, maybe we can let them know, you know, we're gonna be looking at. The numbers, see if we can maybe take a couple of parcels off, this one's time sensitive, it could be the difference between getting forty more. Sixty more, sixty more units or not, right, so that's, that's a huge difference.
Yeah, agreed.
And and not to say, the developer may not do this, I mean, it's, we're, we're, we're trying to be. Very mindful and provide the, an option here, because it's adjacent to an existing MBTA overlay, it makes a lot of sense. And like you said, Melissa, time is of the essence, we can't do the, we can't make it a, an even swap, add, add nine acres, take nine off. Uh right now. But we can easily add the nine, and we can look at taking some away uh at a later time. But it's, it. It, it's just, there's a, like, I I like, I like how you put it, Melissa, it's that. You know, in the, if I change my view to a a someone at town meeting voting, it's like, why are you doing this? And and that's very important, um. And it, we don't know, we're just providing, we're trying to provide another mechanism. To to the developer, so that we don't have two hundred units.
And it does preserve the rail trail, I mean, I know, I I believe the developers were going to try to revisit. Um you know, however they could to move the building so that it wasn't covering the rail trail, but. Reducing if they agree by sixty units would certainly.
Although I will tell you, there was a comment made at the site meeting. Uh not by the developers, but by someone on their team, I'll call them a consultant. That said, we'll be done with this before they ever get that rail trail even started. It, you know, he named other communities where there were similar projects, you know, it was, it was said, like. They'll never, this isn't gonna, we're gonna build how we're gonna build, because the rail trail is so far off. Um Rich did immediately call him out on that, which was great. Um and the developers are like, wait, 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 nope, that's not our, you know, that's not our plan, it certainly was their, one of their consultants' plans, like. Forget about worrying about the rail trail, build. Because it's gonna be years away and we're gonna be gone, this is, this project's gonna be done.
Yeah, that's a benefit to doing the the MBTA overlay.
Do you want me to screenshot the language?
Yeah, let's put it up.
Here we are.
So there's two, two.
That's the first one, and then followed by the.
Yeah, so it's eight, because I said nine, in a previous statement, it's eight, we're adding eight, alright.
There were eighty-one, it's changed to eighty-nine. And then the map change.
And then the date, the date changes, cuz we're changing the map, so that's the date of town meeting.
Correct.
And then, and then this is a, this is not the full map, it's just an excerpt clipbook of it.
Correct.
You go back to the language up top. One, this is the THPMOD is an overlay district, have a land area, is that correct, or was that? We're just carrying over grammatical, the the doesn't read correct.
I think uh. Think I just carried over, so.
Having, maybe? Or consist of?
Maybe we could. Maybe you make a friendly amendment to. Hearing to say having.
It needs a little bit of work.
Yeah. We give it a shot, but yeah, I think that's exactly uh. I can check to be sure if you want, just. If you have a second, I could go on uh. I go on general code.
Your screen share stopped, Rich.
Yeah, I just wanna.
You're looking at E code or general code?
Yeah. Alright, ready for the results?
Yeah.
Drum roll. Have. See? Good catch now, Eric. So maybe have a friendly amendment to.
Yeah, or just that has or something.
That has, yeah. I'll go back to the. I'll pull up for a second. Here we are again. So if uh. Someone wanna even move? Both articles as written?
Well, so this, so we're changing eighty-one, eighty-nine, and then a friendly remember to change. The have to that has, I think.
Yeah, I just think you have to do it at the um.
We'll have to do it at town meeting.
The hearing, yeah.
Sorry. Okay. Uh okay, moving down to the next. And here you're changing the date of the town meeting. And showing a new map or a a clip of the map.
Correct.
That works for me. Any other discussion? Well, then I'd propose a. Propose to. I think we should move forward with with these zoning articles as these proposed zoning bylaw amendments as written. For our, to per, to send to the select board for their approval for our town meeting on May fourth. Tenth, twenty twenty-five.
Moved.
Every second.
Second.
Alright, we'll do a roll call vote, I'm just going around as I see it on the screen, so Eric Diamond. Chris Montfort. Gary Sullivan.
Aye.
Melissa Mayo.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Okay, Rich, so we'll move forward that, and we'll do our public hearing on the eighth.
It was all we had for this evening.
Okay. I I wanna thank Sue for joining us and providing that valued input.
Always helpful, and thank you, Gary, for joining at after midnight where you are.
Yes, on both accounts. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Moved.
Second.
All is in favor? We are done, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.